Seven o'clock the time of call this January 27th, 2014. Cleveland County Board of Education meeting to order. Tonight we're going to start off as usual with the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Miller, please make the pledge.
Well, I will leave us, but I'm going to introduce the students who will. Tonight we have students from Jefferson Elementary who are going to lead us in the pledge. We have Kaye Oliver, Christopher Orts, Ortiz, I'm sorry, Dewan Jolly, Randy Morgan, and Cora Barbie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a little bit of technical difficulty, but I think the students can speak very loud because they did a great job. And what they said at the end of the pledge, as they told me, that's the something extra that they do at Jefferson every morning. And we thought that it sounded so good that y'all needed to hear that too. So I hope you did hear that. Going to ask them to introduce themselves and tell you what grade they're in and maybe tell you who came with them tonight. It's something we talked about before the meeting. I just asked them, I said, if a new friend moved in down the street from you and they needed to go to school somewhere, what would you tell them about Jefferson Elementary to get them to come to Jefferson? And they gave us some good answers, so we're going to start with Kaye.
I'm Kaye Oliver. I'm in fourth grade.
Who came with you tonight?
My mom, my stepdad, my dad, my stepmom, and my grandparents came with me and my older sister.
And what would you tell somebody if they were looking for another school to go to?
I would tell them that they should have Jefferson because they have nice teachers and they can learn.
Very good. Christopher. What grade? Here in third grade? And who came with you tonight? Your mom came with you, do you see her? What would you tell somebody who was looking for a really good elementary school?
Would you come to Jefferson?
Wow. To learn. That's a good reading, that's very good. Anything else you want to tell them?
My name is Dewan Jolly. I'm in second grade. My daddy came with me, my grandma and my uncle came with me.
What would you tell somebody? Why would they go to Jefferson?
I would tell them to come to, there's a nice place to come to and they be doing nice stuff for me. And Donnie Thurman goes to my church.
Tell me anything else?
Last year I was playing football, I was number thirty-one, I played for the team.
Very good.
My name is Gray Morgan.
What grade are you in, Gray? Ready to say, first grade, I believe? Your mom and daddy, are they out there? They're right back there, sit down, can you wait till them? Okay, alright. You enjoy being in Jefferson, don't you? I know you do, okay. Is there anything else, honey?
I'm Cora Barbie. I'm Cora Barbie.
What grade are you in, Cora?
Kindergarten.
Who came with you tonight?
My mom and daddy and my sister.
What would you tell somebody that went to Jefferson?
It's a good place and you can learn there.
You can learn a lot in this country. And I think, I'm not sure, I didn't get to see if Ms. Paylor was here, their principal, but I'm sure there's some teacher and assistant principal, I'm sorry, are here. And we are so proud that our students can actually lead us in the pledge. Mr. Ofer has something for them. Let's give him a hand.
Next on the agenda, Mr. Harris, I believe you have some of your representatives.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would please give the representatives from five high schools, including our team, to ask them to step up. I'll start here with you, and then that way. And let them introduce themselves too, but we've talked about a lot of good things going on with Cleveland County Schools and also some things that we might need to work on. And they shared lots of information with us and we're going to have what, Chip, step up and introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Chip Ben. I'm a senior at Burns High School. My parents are Wendy, Ben, and Chuck Ben. I'm involved in several activities at my school and community, including on varsity athletics. I am fortunately participating in soccer. I'm a youth and government member. I participate in band with marching and concert. And I'm a voice scout of troop twenty-eighteen currently working on my ABL project, hoping to finish it soon. I plan to attend at, to attend North Carolina State University and study engineering. My career goal is to be some sort of engineer and live a happy and successful life.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Emily Wright. I'm a senior at Burns High School. My parents are Rick and Candy Wright. I'm involved in several activities at school and in our community, including Future Teachers of America, marching band. I was the year major this year, concert band. I first year flew and I actually just came back this weekend from all district that I'm living for the South District. And I also teach for the chance at Burns High School. I plan to attend Appalachian State University and study in music education. And my career goal is to become a Catholic preacher.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ralph Jolly. I'm a senior at Shelby High School. My parents are Daniel and Kalida Jolly. Some things that I'm involved in at school are, I'm part of the varsity football team at Shelby High. Recently won the state championship. I really was a big accomplishment for our team and our coaches, but also for the school and the community for all those who supported us over the years. I was a junior marshal, I'm a board member of the NRI Club. I had the opportunity to be a fourth grade mentor at Jefferson Elementary School. And that's a good experience. Currently I'm undecided about college, but I plan to major in athletic training and I plan to play football in college. My career goal is to reach my full potential as a student athlete and to be happy because in the end it's all that matters. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is David Allen and I'm a senior at Shelby High School. My parents are David and Amy Allen. Couple of things I'm involved in at school, I play golf and soccer for Shelby High School. Led the conference in assists this year in soccer and went to the state championship last year in golf. Got the chance to start a couple of programs. At the high school I created Charlie's Christmas Project, which helps less fortunate students have a memorable Christmas. And at Jefferson Elementary I helped create the Backpack Program, which helps eight students bring home a backpack full of food each weekend. I also got the chance to intern at Young Life this past semester, where I got the chance to lead weekly volleyball study and leader at the freshman, for the freshman cabinet at Wind Gap. Plan to attend University of North Carolina and major in political science and journalism. I'm currently a Warhead Kane finalist and I go the first week of March for the finals weekend. My career goal is to be a political writer. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Justice Brown. I attended Kingsville High School. My parents are Benjamin Brown and local Brown. I take part in our club, National Artists Association, make a wish nomination. And I took part in a group in community action. I plan on attending NC State for four years to stay with medical engineering and my major is to be a physician. My future career plans are to become a professional medical engineer after attending for four years in the industry and have a successful life.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Emily Harris. I'm a senior at Kingsville High School. My parents are Michael and Angela Harris. I was the captain of the cheerleading squad and track and field team. I was also the two thousand and thirteenth year president for Kingsville High School. I plan to attend college at NC State University and study fashion textile management. My career goal is to become a fashion designer in Jefferson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Allison Ward. I'm a senior at Cleveland College High School. My parents are Paul and Joseph Ward. I'm a member of Butler Baptist Church. I volunteer for CARE, which is an animal rescue group in our community. I am vice president for Cleveland County Youth Council and I work at Gardner-Webb University. I plan to attend college at either Gardner-Webb University or Western Carolina to study business. My career goal, I'm not totally sure what I want to do, so.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Miss Chairman. My name is Sarah Denver and I'm a senior at Burns High School. My parents are George and Anna Denver. And a few of the activities that I'm involved in in my community and in school are, I'm vice president of the senior class. I play varsity women's soccer for four years. This past year I was crowning Chris as Home Public Queen. And I'm a member of Broad River Community Church and the East Group there. And after graduation I plan to attend college at Appalachian State University with a major in pre-med and to continue playing soccer for the mountain years. And my career goal is to work in the orthopedics field and with children, so kind of those two together somehow.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Rachel Queen and I'm a senior at Crest High School. My parents are Robert and Connie Queen. I'm involved in several activities at my school and my community. I play on the varsity soccer team and the volleyball team at Crest. I'm a member at Relive for Life and SCA. I have also participated in health admin and volunteering there. I am a member at Mount Sun Baptist Church and been involved in the eighth grade. I also volunteer at Old Bridge Elementary and help with the third grade class there. I play to attend NC State University and be studying accounting. My career goal is to become a forensic accountant and work for the FBI, the SVI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Give them all three things. Next on the agenda, I believe we have some special recognition, Mr. Fogle.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to get them to report you tonight, a wonderful opportunity that we have again to recognize in our career technical education students. Tonight we have the opportunity to recognize the Crest High School FFA veterinarian team. They placed first in the state of North Carolina through wax competition. The FFA state convention this past fall was where they competed and they were representing North Carolina at the National FFA Convention next following Indianapolis. Team members are, as I called before, Ms. Emily Hammer, Josh Stevens, Ashley Wong, and Paulie Moore. And I'd also like to say that Emily Hammer also was the top overall individual winner for the state of North Carolina. But it's not her issue. Give them a round of applause. I'd also like to recognize Mr. Harris and back here as well as Mr. Graves, principal of Crest High School for their support. Mr. Harris and his wife, Katie, are the advisors for the FFA at Crest High School. Done a fantastic job there. Tonight I'd also like to announce that the Crest High School Air Culture Program has received a $5,000 grant from the Tobacco Trust Fund Grant. They use this grant to purchase a livestock trailer that we use as a mobile animal science demonstration unit for the community. An opportunity to go around to our elementary schools as well as the fairies. So again, we congratulate them on that accomplishment this week.
Thank you. Mr. Fogle, why don't you ask them to come around here and shake their hands? We like to, please. Young people. Congratulations. Great job. Great job. Henry, congratulations. Thank you. At this time we'd like to recognize any other guests we might have here tonight. Principals, the two of our have been introduced. North Carolina Association of Teacher Assistants, we have anybody there? You'll state your names, please.
My name is Brad, the president of the school, the waterway elementary school. I'd like to make a word from the waterway school today, say all the great things that was going on with our students and staff.
Do we have a plane going down?
Thank you. NCAE representatives, any elected officials. Next item is adoption of our agenda. I believe we might have motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I would. I'd like to make amendment to the adoption of our agenda and to go into closed session at the conclusion of our meeting for someone to G S one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven to discuss personnel matters.
We have seconded this amendment. Moved and seconded that we adopt this amendment to amend the agenda to go into closed session for personnel matters at the close of this open session. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously on to approve the full agenda. What's the pleasure, Fogle?
Would the agenda be approved as amended? So.
It's been moved and seconded that the agenda be approved as amended. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is public participation. Ms. Bridges. Thank you. Next item is the consideration of the minutes of the January thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen business session. What's the pleasure, Fogle?
Making motion to approve.
So. Moving seconded to approve the minutes of January thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen business session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Now on to the closed session at the same date.
Making motion to approve.
So.
Moving seconded to approve the minutes of the January thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen closed session. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item is globally competitive students. Dr. Fisher, I think you're going to inform us about this item on the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Remember before Dr. Fogle, it's my pleasure to come to you this evening. Talked a few minutes about the Read to Achieve legislation. I know you guys heard a lot about that, a lot of discussion about that. I know our group was at Wolf and Springs Elementary today, having a discussion about that. And then at the end of the information, I will make a request that you ask that you approve a letter that we send to the State Board for some waiver options. But first one to kind of just update you and give you a little information about Read to Achieve. As you know, it's a legislative mandate, House Bill nine fifty was passed. And the goal of Read to Achieve, and if you look at, give you a copy of the actual law, the goal of Read to Achieve in the legislation is something that I think we agree with. If you notice the letter that I posted for your board docs, I mentioned that in the letter. We intend to that, that reading is important and essential. It's something that we agree on. Our instructional staff understand the importance that reading is to student success, the importance it is to graduation. And we by no means, by asking for a waiver of some of this, we want to minimize the importance of reading. But we do have some concerns, as noted in our letter, about the Read to Achieve legislation. And not just with the legislation, with the implementation of that. Just to give you a little background on that, how that works in Cleveland County Schools in both the state. The Read to Achieve legislation basically states in summarizing that students will be proficient at the end of third grade, the third grade end of course reading test. Those that are proficient will be promoted. Those students that are not proficient will be then given a read test, it's called a Read to Achieve test. If they are not proficient there, then they are to attend summer camp. I know this is not new information for you, but just want to refresh you if you remember. Students also have the option before summer school of completing a student portfolio. And some of the questions, concerns that have come up recently and caused a lot of conversation are around that portfolio. We'll get into that in just a minute. So there's some different parts of that. And then the summer camp piece comes in there. Students begin new year, and if you remember back to our fall work session I mentioned to you, that students will be taking the beginning of grade. Our teachers and our staff refer that with the BOB. First time I saw that written somewhere, I went, what is a BOB? But that's the beginning of grade test and it is a real BOD. And I asked you, remember, years ago, our students, our third grade students took a pretest. The BOB is not a pretest, it's an actual third grade, end of grade exam. Those students take that pretest and that gives an indication of where those students are at. Some information I've given to you has some criteria for students to be, to pass the Read to Achieve legislation. Obviously, the best way, the easiest way, the most obvious way is to pass the end of grade, third grade test. But if a student scored above a four forty-two on the beginning of grade test, and I believe we had a little over two hundred, two hundred and three of the exact students that scored above a four forty-two on the beginning of grade test at Cleveland County, then those students are really exempt from doing a portfolio. They don't need the portfolio even if they fail the end of grade test. And I know that that's kind of a little bit confusing, but it's sometimes confusing for us. Sort of like information, you get a little piece of information and then you get a little more and you get a little more and you get a little more. It's not uncommon for us to come in on Monday and I come up to Dr. Fogle and say, did you see that memo? And he said, yeah. I've never seen that before. After our trucking team, we haven't seen that information come up before. So some of this information is coming out of this confusion on students that what they can do. But if a student, let's say that a student doesn't make a four forty-two and they're in our schools right now, there's a student portfolio that our students are working on. And that student portfolio really caused a lot of anxiety in our teachers and really one of the reasons why we've written the waiver letter. The portfolio is consisted of twelve standards. Each standard has ten reading passages that can be used in a portfolio. So that gets about a hundred and twenty portfolios that students have the option to take. Those students can take up to three at a week and they must pass that within eighty percent rate, four out of five. Students take those portfolios. Out of the ten for each standard, we can choose some to use as instructional passages. Our director, Bill Meechey, has chosen one of those passages and our teachers use that for instruction. The other nine, schools can choose which nine they want to use in the classroom as that portfolio assessment. So students take these assessments during class and then teachers have to grade that. There's a complex set of grading criteria that for test security have to be used. Now, at the end of that portfolio assessment, if students have successfully completed three portfolios in each of the twelve standards, or thirty-six passages, then they have met, passed the student portfolio. If they, a state student gets twenty-four done and takes the end of grade test, the Read to Achieve test, and does not pass those, then they still have twenty-four done, they have to come to summer camp to try to finish the, to get to thirty-six. So that's a little bit of background there. You can see in the letter, we have noticed concerns that we have not only with the legislation, but the implementation of Read to Achieve in the portfolio. First of all, we have concerns about the readability of the passages. I sent you some information this week about the readability of each of those standards. We are concerned that the twelve standards, and have students pass three, we are continuing to assess the same standard. We're concerned that this continuing assessing of these standards lose instructional time. And if you see that, and our concerns is strong on the loss of instructional time. We heard that today. I've met with third grade teachers, I've met with principals, I've been meeting with elementary schools tomorrow. And I'm more concerned I have, they're losing instructional time by giving these portfolio passages. We're concerned that because we're giving these passages and we get so many, losing instructional time, we're losing out on important issues such as math, science, history, those things. We're concerned about the implementation and testing of this plan and student disabilities and how that impacts those students. And we're concerned that the length of the summer camp and the requirements of summer camp really creates some issues for our students, our families, and our schools. So what we ask for is we ask the board to approve, or to endorse, three waiver options that we have sent to, and brought here to the State Board. And with your blessing, we'll ask that they consider the option number one is the use of Reading Three D program in lieu of the student portfolios. Reading Three D, if Donna's here, she can answer a lot of those questions about Reading Three D. But in short, Reading Three D, Three D is a way that we can assess students' reading skills. We can determine using that if they are on grade level. Our students, our teachers have to do it already. That's a state requirement. So we're already using this method that will assess whether students are reading on grade levels. So we're asking that we use that in lieu of the portfolios. Waiver option number two is we're asking instead of the student have to master three sections or three different passages in each standard, that that would be reduced to one. We feel like if the students master that, then we need to move on and not continue to assess. I noted there that we would even be happier with only two, that we would, our priority would be one. Our third option is that we would ask for a consideration, some relief there in summer camp. There's a seventy-two hour or six week minimum. We're asking that we be able to keep the seventy-two hour minimum, but reduce that to four weeks. We believe seventy-two hours over four weeks will uphold the integrity of the law, but will ease the operation of our schools. We've had conversations with maintenance about HPA C work, roof repairs, painting, that needs to act in our schools. And we have students, a lot of students in our classrooms, that that's very difficult. But also for our parents that commit to, you know, see. But also for our parents, if we get to six weeks of that summer, it'd be very difficult. So we're asking that you bless this, and you approve this, these waiver options, that we can move forward. Dr. Golds, and I have heard from State Superintendent Michael Junatson, and Dr. Atkinson has our information. She did, unless she's not sure that option two and option three will meet the integrity of the law that we, she basically said that she's not sure if those will be, well, the State Board already approved, but that option one would consider to be an option. Our request is that we send our request in as is, and note that not only do we think this is a realistic request, but this serves in support of our teachers and our schools understanding what they're doing every day in their classroom. So just time, I'd be glad to try to answer any of your questions, if you have any remarks to Read to Achieve, the portfolios, beginning of grade, end of grade exams, or our waiver options.
I have a question of the State, that is made by Dr. Golds, that I have a federal raise, and I have a great amount of time for the fourth, because I'm ready to achieve the ability to have a full-time assistant to help them with this, with this law. I also think that at some schools, I don't know how they're all doing, the principals and assistant principals, CTCs are helping the grade weeks best because it takes two. I'm addressing that as well, as far as that component, to have two people to grade it.
The implementation is, implementation is the difficult thing, of course. It's, we've heard that, Donna and I have met with the elementary teachers, she listens to principals, I listen to principals, and we teachers, many times, and it is the time factor of the implementation, the assessments, the assessments, the assessments. And originally, it sounds like that, okay, well, that assessment, you know, we originally, the information we got this summer was it's going to be a one-page, ten or fifteen minutes. There are multiple pages, five, six pages, and it's taken our students, on average, around forty-five minutes to complete one of the portfolio passages. And then, that's just the beginning, and then you're right. The scoring of that is not something that we think a teacher can just grade. They grade it, it has to be checked, it has to be entered into law, and it has to be checked again. So really, realistically, there's three people that have to document and touch that for it to go. So it is a very cumbersome process. So not only are we, are we, you know, concerned about losing instructional time, there is the additional time stress that teachers are spending. Thank you, your question.
Yes, fair enough. I just wanted to make sure that everybody is aware that it's not only teachers, the kids are stressed, we have teachers, they don't have assistants. We've taken that problem, and now we've got principals grading work, which is really a concern, especially in many schools.
It's definitely in the schools that we visited, it's definitely a team effort. Everybody's pitching in from the principal, assistant principal, CTCs. You know, as we heard today, other teachers are at grade levels, what we do to support, you know, that brings lots of other questions, you know, about reading, and that's not directly tied to here, but it is a major process. And that's, that's one of the reasons why we feel like we need to at least address this and fight for our teachers and the fact that, try to get them to leave there, because we're already doing the program that assesses student.
Mr. Fisher, I have a question, but I'd like to just say, after all the years as a principal, twenty-five years as a principal in this county, I'm very much in favor of the goals of this law. I believe the kids do need to be retained, if need be, if we haven't got them reading. And I think it's a lofty goal for this law, I support that completely. I support the idea of testing kids, I think we need to test kids. I think we need to measure it, make sure that all our kids are measuring up. And, but, I draw the line at saying, if a little testing is good, you do better than doing more and more and more and more. And certainly, I think we have reached in this particular law, in this particular place, we're reaching the point where we're spending more time testing than what we are teaching. And I think we do need to ask for this waiver, and I totally support the request for the waiver. Just because a little testing is good, just because retention is good, we don't need to spend all day, all year worrying our kids and our parents of this program. And I certainly think sorting a summer session from six weeks to four weeks would probably be just as beneficial to the child as it is, and I think would certainly be much easier on the families and vacations or whatever, if we can get that reduced to a stable amount of time structurally, but reduce that to four weeks. So I wholeheartedly support both.
I would like to say that I'm also wholeheartedly support, I commend you for the letter that you wrote. It's a consensus that this mission is creating teaching assistance, and as we go around, we see that it's dominating instructional time. I've also heard from parents who are adversely affected by this, and of course, the students are probably the ones who are being most affected by it. I wrote down that although we do know that all of this can be changed, as we learned at Volksbrings Elementary, any support that we give them will be appreciated. So I urge the board to ultimately enforce this letter. Thank you all. What's your word?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Fisher, I'll kind of lay a reading to achieve with the last third grade school teacher, and I have a daughter that's in third grade, I hear this every day. A couple of questions. What kind of timeframe are you looking at once we send this letter out, that we will hear a reply back from the superintendent? Will Superintendent make this decision, she take it before the board?
My understanding is before the State Board, in February. That's my, Dr. Golds, I basically submitted this information to Dr. Atkinson, the State Board, with the condition that the board will not support it, we have the opportunity to talk about that. So my understanding is that State Board will be in February, we'll get some feedback on that pretty quick. Mr. Glover, as you know, this has changed, so the legislation or implementation on this change, the implementation has changed. So we're getting updates, you know, daily, or at least weekly, on some little tweaks and things that they've changed on that. But on this piece, we feel like the State, send that to the State Board.
Okay. One more other thing. Once we hear a word, if it goes in favor with us, especially on option one, how soon can we start going with the Read 3D?
We're currently using Read 3D.
Does our directive, is that the same?
Yes, that's my understanding, the correct one. That'll be, and we'll talk about those plans, you know, Donna and I spent a lot of time. We meet data on Read to Achieve, and talk about new things to come next, if this happens, but we're not, this is, it's not just Donna and I, our testing department, our instructional staff, we're hard to picture, and we need our lenders and others, we can best support the schools. So we're, you know, we feel like if that, if we get a letter, or we get some information that in Read 3D, we will implement that.
Well, I think it'll do a good job, especially educating the parents about this, and it's huge, and they would be aware, we're always today, they're having, they're meeting, as we're sitting here talking about it, to let their parents be aware of that. Teachers have been getting hard here the last few years, and this is just another thing that just doesn't affect third grade teachers, but the whole school is all.
That's fair enough. We have had, many of our schools, most of our schools have had Read to Achieve parent nights, presented information. The good thing is, we had many of our schools that did that real early, and that was great. And some of the information's changed since, some of the schools have waived actually, maybe a bit, but, you know, as we've done, I think that the information we've gotten has improved, the implementation there, we just feel like not to mix it, which we're satisfied.
I'm going to make an assumption that we're not the only school system that's doing this.
We are, we are not the only school system. Dr. Golds, you may know a little more than that, all that, but I know that there are some that...
So I would, me and Superintendent, two regions, Superintendent's on Friday, we're supposed to, according to the ICA, we were supposed to spend about twenty minutes talking about this, and spent about an hour and forty-five minutes. It appeared from those two regions, which would have been about twenty-five LAs, maybe seven or eight reentendings against something, or a big college waiver. I would say that, based on what we've been told, and I've had a chance to see this in writing, Grand Ole Opry told me that being in other cases, I've had an opportunity to speak with Superintendent Atkinson personally about this, I've also been involved in a conference called a small group, representing superintendents across the state to talk about this a couple weeks ago. She's assured us that if we get waivers, when LA gets a waiver, that that will be transferable to other way, to other LAs. And so our hope is that at least something that we're suggesting, at least one of the school districts is suggesting, will get some traction. She is meeting tomorrow with the General Assembly's Governor, operations committee, and assured us that she would take, even though two of these are non-starters, I guess, or she's assured us that she would take them, and really the process there would be a recommendation to change the law. The law is what it is, we're bound by it, and we're not about to pick and choose what's lawful, we abide by it, we don't, this is a regulation, we have to abide by, we're trying to assist to implement it with the fidelity that we need to. But our hope is that some of the waivers, at least summer school districts suggest will be the ones that will find favor and will be optimized.
And I'm just saying, at that very day, and I've heard this from the other schools too, that the parent meetings that they've been having, while this has been difficult and in some ways cumbersome for the teachers to enact, it can be very positive. They are very positive in their interactions with the parents, and trying to help the parents understand what their students are going through, and emphasizing that none of us are against the law. We all want our students to be reading at the appropriate level, but it's just the way that they're having to do this that has made it difficult. And I would also like to remind everyone that we do have someone on the State Board educating, although he's on the non-voting member, but perhaps you can stress the importance of these waivers.
And I agree with you, I think our teachers sent the right basis, I think our teaching administration, are sending the right basis out there. This is something that we are working through.
We did have, just so you know, at our meeting Friday, it was on the P, we have a waiver, I think they're concerned as we are, that you want to do something, but they may have, offer everything with the law. So I'm sure the cooker will hear that in the conversation. I do, I do feel like we have support, the State Board, and they're trying to all aid to help our teachers.
Any other comments, questions, straight?
I agree that nobody, Dr. Fisher, with the idea that children should be able to read at the appropriate level, everybody's in agreement on that, we know that. Students passing thirty-six reading passages, they're taking three tests a week, and teachers, third grade teachers are spending thirty, thirty-five percent of their time doing nothing but giving assessments. They're spending a third of their...
All the time.
And they're just getting assessments, and more assessments, and more assessments, and it just keeps coming and coming and coming, and the children failed the test, and they have to retake those assessments, and it just goes on and on. It's, this is an instruction, this is just assessment power, and we're abusing, in my judgment, we're abusing third graders and we're abusing teachers that don't have time to teach because they're giving all these assessments. The goals are same, the state has provided the wrong assessment at the wrong time, they have, they have reading assessment, that Donna said, the Reading 3D. And what the state says, well, that's a good assessment, keep that, but they did this one too, and they just piled that one up, and at the same time, they said do this one too, by the way, we want to take away some of the teaching assistance. And it's just, something's got to give, something like that. I'm pleased that the county's considering asking for a waiver out of the State Board section.
You're all we can hear from us.
The board, pictures did their job.
Question on that?
I didn't want to cut off discussion. If anybody...
I just wanted to say, a whole half of the teachers and administrators, I was not subtle, not subtle, but very pleased with their attitude, their professional approach to this, that professional, definitely, you know, they accept it, that they have them, they're willing to move forward, they want to move forward confident, they want to be very intentional about it, and I'm very appreciative of the leadership, because I don't know about why, you know, this is what they have to do, even though our teachers and our staff are so subjective, so much right there. But the professionalism that I've seen and observed has been very impressive, so I just wanted to make sure that, that our teachers know that we are observing, and we are appreciative of their professional approach.
Anybody? If not, I think it's time for the chair to... Movement seconded that we apply for the waiver that's recommended by Dr. Fisher. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Fisher. On the Twenty-First Century Professionals Personnel Report, are there questions? Superintendent, personnel report. If not, what's the pleasure?
My question's for the personnel, I'm...
Movement seconded, approved, personnel report is recommended by Superintendent. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. On to Twenty-First Century Systems, Mr. Lee, I think we discussed first, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen audit contract.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Golds. You have in your packet the proposed contract for audit services for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year. We respectfully request that you approve that so that we can get the auditors scheduled for this spring. To give you a little bit of background information, basically, over the last twelve years that I've been here, we, this is the fourth rotation of auditors that we've used in that period of time, so every three, four years, we have brought to you new contracts in all of that process. The last time we did an RFP was two thousand ten, eleven school year, and I can tell you that this contract right here is, even though it shows a slight increase from last year, is still lower than any year prior to the years that we had before we brought the auditors that we currently are using right now, going back to merger. At the time of merger, the audit was seventy-one thousand, five hundred dollars, to give perspective of how that's gone over the period of time. Also, for your information, there are basically three audit firms in the state that do the majority of the school audits, which Dixon Hughes is one of those. Actually, the two largest of these do approximately fifty percent of the audits, and Dixon Hughes is in fact the largest audit firm ever in the southeast period, whether it's school audits or what have you. So if you have any questions, if you're more happy to try to respond to those, we would also put you on notice that it would be time probably for us to go out for RFP for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year, sometime in the December, January timeframe next year.
Thank you, Lee. Questions, discussion? Yes, sir.
What is there required on their audit? In other words, what expense do they audit? Is it just numbers, or do they check any payout?
The purpose of a financial audit, I'm just saying, is to assure the public that is reading those audited statements, that the audit, the financial statements fairly reflect the financial position of the school system. So they're doing all the work that they need to do to tell you that, in fact, those financial statements fairly present to the reading public the financial position of the school system. system.
Any other questions?
Mr. Lee, I have one question. I just wanted to make sure that I clear my island. The second page of the contract, it talks about the price, which is forty thousand ten, and then it talks about interim compounds. Tell me if I'm reading this correctly. I read that basically as a, like a drawdown, when you go to the house, we'll give them thirty, and then we're not going to give them another forty, we're going to give them the balance of ten, or whatever that is, I'm sorry. Is that accurate?
That is exactly correct. What it really is, Mr. Fisher, they're allowed to do exactly like a house, progress bill, and they've completed so much of the work, then they can submit through the local government commission, and the local government commission approve that, and they can get up to thirty thousand dollars that's been approved by the LGC prior to the actual completion of the finished financial statements. But they can't make a final draw like the house until you've done the closing.
And then when they're done, and they present us their report, then they get the balance of the forty thousand dollars. It's not forty plus or less, is it?
That is correct.
Any other question?
Mr. Lee, you did make the distinction that this is still one of the lowest prices that we've had since merger.
It is, this group of auditors, prior to bus going out for bid in two thousand ten, eleven, the lowest fee that we had prior to that, going all the way back to merger, was forty-three five.
Could be no further questions, comments?
And they are checking everything. Talk along.
Mr. Lee, but maybe you should explain us the difference, this is not a focused audit.
I'm sorry, I'm saying, tell me.
This is not a focused audit.
No, it is a financial audit, and again, it is the same criteria that an audit firm uses for any company, whether or not it's a school system, or the county, or the city, or anything else. They're doing the audit work required so that the reading public knows that those financial statements fairly present the financial position of the entity.
Any question that we approve the contract for Dixon Hughes? Dixon Hughes, no, there isn't one. They broke apart. They were Dixon Hughes.
It's next to you. It's moved in second, and we approved the audit contract for two thousand thirteen, fourteen, for Dixon Hughes. And any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. On, Mr. Lee, consider your contract review.
Mr. Chairman, we have a cost per copy contract, where we don't own the copiers, we own the copies that we make, so each time there's a click on the copier, that's what we really own. The contract that you have reflects a five percent reduction from the previous five years, and put it in perspective, this vendor has a hundred and two of the hundred and fifteen school systems on a cost per copy contract. Whenever I came here twelve years ago, we had contracts scattered out all over the county, and Mr. Wolles and Mr. Harris will certainly remember what those days were, and people bought copiers, and you had situations where you had schools that were paying as much as five cents a copy for a copier, that they didn't realize that, but that's what the contract really had. But over the period of time, we've gotten into a cost per copy contract, this is certainly a good contract, it's the largest vendor of all of the school, anybody that's providing service to school systems, and it is a five percent reduction. I respectfully request that you approve this so that we can move forward with this contract.
Five percent reduction, question?
In the cost, yes.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Lee?
The copy will be prepared, that's on their dime, or that's on our dime?
That's on their dime. This covers the, you have to replace the cartridges and.
Except for consumables, is that right? Does that include the consumables?
It covers everything except if you've got a finisher, you've got staples and that sort of stuff, you have to buy your own staples, but it covers the printing and everything else.
Anybody else? If not, it's a pleasure. Over. Do we approve the contract? Over. Second. It's been moved in both places, seconded, and we approve the copier contract renewal as presented by Mr. Lee. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Onto student transfer requests, all of you have had that in your agenda. Sorry. First reading of new policy regarding service animals, if men leave you out. That's quite all right, so I'm sure.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, school board members. Dr. Wolles, coming for you tonight. We're the first reading of our request for service animals in our school. We do have a student in our school system that is requesting us to consider this option. In your packet, you received your information this week and some updates today, but this is forty-three oh five, forty-three oh five R, one, two, and three. The first section talks about the definition of service animals, the procedures for that, the liability, the removal. The second section, the R one, talks about the action of the request and the description of that, how that works. There are five things for that, and that we can remove the animal if need be, and the liability for that. And then the last two section actually is the request itself, and then the contract that we provide with them and the school system. At this time, I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
No questions.
That's what I like to hear.
Well, this is the first read, so there'll be time for questions. I'm sure Mr. Holland will be available, any of you all who may, or others who may ask questions about this. That's it, we'll come up again at our next meeting.
Thanks very much.
Now, on student transfer requests, all that is in front of you, four docs, in the, what's the pleasure, over?
Any question that we approve?
Second.
Second.
It's moved in second to approve the student transfer request as requested by the administration. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Onto announcements, January twenty-seventh, Dr. Wolles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will highlight just a couple of things. Dr. Popper will need me to tell you and remind you that we have our SACS accreditation visit next week. You are, you have small group appointments with the visiting team on Monday, you receive that schedule, and then we will have a call, we're meeting here on Wednesday at noon to receive their linear report. So I'm hoping that you'll be with us for that, I know a couple of you got time for this next week, and we're aware of that, but please have that on your calendar, it's an important event. This will be our second time of going through district accreditation, last time we were very successful, and I don't think we have any other issues. This time, I think you got to be, have got the things. Our, Dr. Popper has done a great deal of work preparing for this, and so look forward to having him share with us. We have two other events coming up that I reminded you of, our T.T. Excellence Award from our foundation on April eighth, and our senior scholars banquet on May first. We have those coming up, so I hope you'll have those on your calendar, and we'll join us for those. Then, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to share another bit of information with you, of good news, and I'd like to share a letter with you that I prepared. Dear board members, at the conclusion of the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year, I will have completed thirty-four years of service in public schools of our state. From my early days as a high school teacher to the past fourteen years serving as superintendent, I had the privilege to work with dedicated professionals and support staff who give unselfishly in support of the children we serve. It's been a distinct honor to return home and serve the students of this district as superintendent for the past seven years. Cleveland County has outstanding teachers, administrators, and support staff who work daily to do what is best for our children. It's been an honor to work along with this team to ensure students are well served. For the terms of my contract, please accept this correspondence as notice of my intention to retire on June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. While I will miss the daily interaction with my colleagues, I believe it is time for me to move in another direction, and for others to lead the important initiatives that are ahead for our school district. Please know that I appreciate the support I receive from board members and our staff. While these are difficult times with many attacks on public schools, I believe our district is poised for even greater success as initiatives in the new strategic plan are in implementation. Please know that I will continue to work tirelessly for the success of our schools in my remaining months as superintendent. I will work to ensure a smooth transition when new leadership is selected. I will also continue to be involved and support the work of our schools in my most important role as a parent in the district. Thank you for the opportunity I've had to serve the Cleveland County schools. Sincerely, Dr. Wolles.
Thank you, Dr. Wolles. I know I speak for the board, and thank you also all of your service, and look forward to your continuing service. June thirtieth. Good night. Mr. Lee, thank you. Onto good news. Well, I can't totally agree that that's good news, to take for true. However, I think it's good news for you, and I think that you will be successful in whatever direction you take yourself as time goes by. Mr. Glover, do you have a motion for press review?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we go into closed session, two Gs, one forty-three, that's three, and eight forty-one.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved in second, and we go into safer session. Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you all for coming.